And then I gotta do broadcast and we're live FYI.
Okay.
And I also gotta do. Supposed to be able to broadcast on, I don't see the option to broadcast on YouTube.
Oh geez, my numbers just went, okay. Way up.
It's rising up exponentially here.
Yeah, I can't.
Look at it, bro.
When it gets 200,000, let me know.
I think I like it better in the board office when I'm a tiny little speck. Can't get my camera right here.
So we can't broadcast live on YouTube unless I can get the district computer thing fixed. So I'm working on that. I'll keep trying to, it looks like we probably have to do an update of some kind.
Can't, hey.
I don't know. I haven't heard from Joe or Karen about their ability to attend or not.
Karen wasn't feeling well. She sent me a text earlier, so she might not be on.
Hello, Jordan.
Good evening, Jordan.
Jordan. Hi. Oh, I was just gonna text you and make sure you got in. So just Joe, did anybody text Joe?
I have not.
Okay, so Joe is with us, so we have everybody but Karen, correct? Well.
Looks to be.
Peter, are we ready to start the meeting or are you still working on something?
We're good.
We're good. Okay, then, let's go. Greetings, everybody. I'm Paul Hagerty, the Board President, and I'm welcoming you to a special meeting of the Rome City School Board. This meeting was requested by our Superintendent Peter Blake, and the subject is the COVID-19 virus and all its implications relative to the school district. As everybody's, I'm sure, is very aware, there's much discussion in all different domains these days about COVID and in particular about schools and what they're doing relative to working remotely or not working remotely. So with that as a background, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Blake to offer some introductions and to begin our discussions unless there is anybody else that has anything else to say. Mr. Blake, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Appreciate everybody taking some time. I know we spoke a little bit about the, about this topic last week at the board meeting briefly. Obviously, some things have changed since last Thursday. Felt it's important to at least have a conversation as a group to allow the board to ask questions, to provide some more feedback input on kind of where things stand and how we look at this time. So the most important thing, the question that's kind of come up from, it's still a moving target, is the yellow zone question. I know that the Sentinel yesterday published an article that our county executive, Mr. Pascanti, made a comment that he expects that it's possible that Rome, Utica, and Camden could be deemed a yellow zone in the near future. What I will say about that is if you, the issue with the yellow zones is if you take it by the actual governor's initial designation, that would mean the entire county would have to reach a percentage of positive case threshold. If you do the math on that, it's highly unlikely that Oneida County would ever wind up in a yellow zone based on the math. We're just not going to get there. If, if that were to happen by the original specs of the governor, the soonest Oneida County would be in a yellow zone would be November 30th. Because in order to obtain a yellow zone, it requires a seven or 10-day average of positive cases to be higher than 2.5%. So that's a heavy lift. However, if the governor changes how he's going to determine yellow zone similar to what he did in Anadaga County, which is instead of going by the entire county or the entire region and just starts pinpointing or targeting zip code, we could be deemed a yellow zone pretty quickly in Rome depending on where the residents are that are testing positive in our region. So we don't know the answers to what's going to happen with that, so it could be likely to be a yellow zone as soon as tomorrow, as late as November 30th and possibly never. We don't control that, that portion of the destiny, if you will. What yellow zone means for Rome would be that schools could remain open if we were to test 20% of our in-person students and staff over the course of two weeks. So we would have two weeks to test. Testing is supposed to be provided by the New York State Department of Health through the Oneida County Department of Health. I have spoken with Mayor Izzo on the topic. She's in frequent communication with County Executive Pascanti on the topic. We do feel that as long as the state comes through with providing the tests, that we have the capacity to obtain tests, to test 20% of our school population in those two weeks if needed. The concern about testing, I ran some numbers for us today. The concern about testing is 20%, by the way, we need consent. Parents would need to consent for their students and staff members would need to consent as well. My concern with the 20% testing rule is for Rome, that would equate to needing to perform 871 tests in our school district in those two weeks. To date, in the past two and a half months, we've only tested 794 school district employees and students. So that means we'd have to find a way to test more people in two weeks than we've tested in two and a half months, which is going to be a concern whether or not there's the actual people to perform the test in the volume that we have to get them done. On top of that, we don't have a clear answer yet, but the information we have received is that the school district is responsible for the cost of the testing results. So we would have to pay the laboratories to determine the results of the test. We do not have to pay for the actual tests themselves and/or the administration of the test. That's a different, different story. But even still, we might have to burden that cost. So that's some information on the yellow zone that's kind of come up. I know it's not completely clear, but it's certainly more information than we had last week on what it would be. Depending on who you talk to, some people will tell you that politically, it's a wise decision to try to persevere through and stay open in the yellow zone. Other people will tell you that it's wisest and easiest just to shut down in the yellow zone and go completely remote. For lack of a better term, kind of control your own destiny. But as of right now, that's where we stand on the yellow zone piece. I think that probably a good point for the conversation tonight, we could probably talk here for seven hours if we wanted to on the topic. I've said repeatedly, there's very polarizing opinions about COVID relative to schools being open, schools being closed. There's positives on both sides, there's negatives on both sides. In a meeting with our full administrative team today, I can tell you that we talked for about an hour on the topic and had an equal number of reasons to stay open as we did as reasons to go remote for an extended period of time. There's no one good answer to any of this. It all depends on which perspective you want to look at it from. So with that being said, I will welcome any questions or comments from the board. I've done my best to prepare some information for questions that might come up. Hopefully, I'm as prepared as I can be. But certainly, I'll yield the floor to the board for conversation and questions. Or if there's any topic I didn't cover that you want me to, right off the bat, I'll do that as well. Sorry.
Um, Peter, right now, what schools are closed because of COVID right now because of the numbers?
Thank you. I thought about that after I stopped talking because late today, we had a flurry. So right now, Joy Elementary is still remote for two days due to staff shortage, due to quarantine. RFA will be remote for the next four days, returning on November 30th again due to staff shortage to cover the building. And Denty Elementary, just literally right before I left in the meeting, I sent an email to the staff. The community will be getting an email shortly as well. We had a positive confirmed case at Denty around 5:00 this evening. They will be remote for the next two days so we can contact.
Approximately how many actual COVID positives have we had since reopening, going hybrid?
A great question. The, I'm going to seem a little wishy-washy on this and I apologize, and that's because the information that we get from the Department of Health does not line up with the information that we get from staff members or parents. We are finding that oftentimes, parents or staff members are notifying us that they are positive or their child is positive. Sometimes as many as six days in advance of the Department of Health. So the numbers are a little bit wishy-washy for that reason. Off the top of my head, I know of, at this point, five staff members that have been tested positive, and I know of five students that have tested positive. That does not mean that there are not more than that. That's simply what I know of off the top of my head. I believe if you look at the COVID report card online, they are reporting more than that. Currently, the state is reporting 20 positive cases since September 1st.
So that's five students out of a population of roughly 6,000?
I would say roughly 5,300, but yes. And again, that's off the top of my head. Joe, the state's reporting, the state is reporting a total of 20 cases in the past two and a half months. 13 total cases, students and staff in the past two weeks.
You don't, you don't know how many of those cases are students and how many are staff? That's just 20 total?
Correct. That's how the state's reporting the data. That's their official data. What I know has been reported to me either personally or through our county Department of Health.
So we've got the student population's about 5,300. How many teachers roughly?
Teaching staff is about 450, 500.
Are the bus drivers counted in this at all or are they separate count?
Bernie bus drivers are not counted in our count or our internal count. I believe they would show up on the state reporting data because when you go to a center, the center is, the testing center is supposed to ask you if you're affiliated with the school district in any way, and they're supposed to catalog that. So, but that's again on the employee or the individual. I don't know what people are reporting when they go get tested.
Peter, do we know what the, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lee.
I was just gonna ask if they have requirements for a certain amount of testing, percentage of testing, or if they don't, the bus drivers.
Can you repeat that, Lee? It broke up at the beginning.
Yeah, are, are the bus drivers required to test a certain amount of times per timeframe or no?
No, no staff are required to test in any regular intervals.
Peter, do we know how many of those 20 positive cases resulted in any type of hospitalization?
For Rome, I do not believe any to date. John, I see your hand there. John Nash, go ahead.
Yeah, Peter, just wondering on a percentage basis, how does Rome compare to other districts in the area?
In terms of a percent positive of student and school population?
Yes.
I don't have that figure. I haven't even looked at other districts percentage-wise, but if you think about percentages, I would say we're probably the equivalent of, the bigger concern is not the positive cases, it's the quarantining. And that's the issue we've had trouble keeping up with right now is that, again, we've only had a handful of positive cases. Generally, we shut down for two days to make sure we cover our bases with contact tracing. But it's the quarantining of staff members that causes the closures more than the actual virus. And obviously, the quarantining is a result of the virus. It's about contact. But when, that's the biggest problem we've had is making sure we have enough adults in the building to cover the students that are coming in. But I think that in general, on a positive case result, I think we're probably slightly higher percentage-wise of positive cases because we have more density in Rome. But if you look at buildings closing due to other districts and buildings closing due to staff shortages, I think we're comparable, if not doing a little bit better than some other districts on that topic.
John Walda, you mute your, your mic is muted, but go ahead.
I mean, so the predicament we face, I mean, I appreciate, Joe, that you asked the questions you asked because it's good for people to know the district scope of infection, but the reality is more to the point of what John just asked, which is how many closures have we had to do because people then did the right thing when they had an exposure, which is not go to work, which is monitor yourself for symptoms, which is quarantining. And correct me if I'm wrong, can people do that more effectively if they don't have to go to work, that they don't have to go in person? And I mean, while we're looking at a surge in our area, doesn't it make more sense to be remote right now, given that the likelihood is we're going to have more cases, more people needing to be out of work, not because they're sick, and that's a good thing, but because they have to stay out of work? That's, I guess, my only question.
Yeah, John, that's one of the conversations we had at an administrative team that right now, with the amount of quarantining we have, we are concerned about sub-cost skyrocketing. Middle school and high school, there's a major sub-s shortage. Generally speaking, the, the middle school and high school been able to stay open due to staff shortages because the teachers can cover classes for each other. However, it is voluntary. You can't blame any staff member that is concerned about their own health that might not want to cover class for somebody else not knowing or wanting to increase their own personal exposure. So that is one of the issues on the, the, if you're looking for the pros and cons, a complete remote environment does guard against exposure of staff members and students and can reduce that concern, if you will. Joe, you had your hand raised there?
Yeah, thanks. I was just wondering about, are we still having issues busing the kids or getting enough bus drivers to transport the children?
We have not had a concern of driver shortage in the past two weeks. In fact, the principals today commended Andy and Brian Warren, our dispatcher for the workdays that over the past few weeks to make sure that buses were timely, both to and from school. Most of the issues with transportation, aside from the two positive cases, seem to have been rectified. And on another positive note with the bus drivers, clearly with two positive cases of a bus driver, with, with that not taking down your entire bus fleet, I gotta give Bernie Buck some commendation. Whatever protocols and places they put in over at their garage and their shop is allowing, they're requiring staff members to socially distance, wear masks, and reducing exposure risk there. So I thank them for, for that, for not taking down the transportation fleet as a result of exposure. Tanya, you raised your hand, I think.
So I've been taking notes for the past three days because everything is crazy. Kind of writing down questions and feedback, but to your point about whether or not we'd be yellow, my understanding is that we went from 79 cases to 109 cases since yesterday. So today's news was not good in term of, terms of the numbers. That in addition to the several letters that we all received today about buildings. So if I have this correctly, the only buildings that we've had that haven't been affected yet are Gansavort and Stokes. So out of nine buildings, we've had seven that we've had to temporarily shutter. I know that some neighboring, I know there's no good answer, and I agree with Peter. I see the reasons for being open, and I understand that from a parent's perspective and from a student's perspective. But then I'm looking at what's happening around us, and I know that pertaining to the busing, did Utica ever end up opening at all? Do we, do we know if Utica actually opened? Because I've been trying to look at what the districts are. They did not? Okay, so Utica is still completely remote. So it's hard, I'm sorry. Um, with Utica being completely remote, it's hard to compare the only other large district in our county. It's us and then a lot of small districts. But Edaron, Collin, Patton, and New Hartford are looking at holiday closures. I, I don't know what the right thing to do is. Are we at an all or nothing? Could we do what we did for the first six weeks? Should we do it just through Thanksgiving? Should we do it through December 4th, like some districts are doing, to get through the Thanksgiving holiday and see how these numbers look a week following gatherings? Like, I just don't know. And if we did, is the option still there to keep our supported learning in school? We had six weeks of supported learning active and they, we didn't have any issues, if I recall. If we end up virtual again, can we still get meals to kids? If we end up virtual again, does that mean we still want teachers to report? Or for that matter, can teachers report? Some teachers are saying there's so much peripheral stuff that I need to deliver virtual instruction. Like, I did great in that first six weeks when I had a space to do it in. Some, we know, still feel, I'm getting really nervous about these numbers. I'm a higher risk. I'd prefer to not. We, you're right, this meeting could be seven hours, but those are the primary things that have been brought to my attention as concerns. So I guess I'm wondering if instead of an all or nothing, do we maybe make a short-term proactive decision to Jonathan's plea?
Yeah, to answer some of your questions there, the, the, you're absolutely right, the supportive learning had no issues for six weeks. And I think if we went to an all-remote model, we would want to continue to service those students in person. What we were doing for six weeks works. We would also want staff to be in the building. However, the one thing I would comment on that is currently, right now, the, the positive cases and/or the exposure concern is more a result of adults in schools, and this is across the country. This is not Rome. It's adults more so than students. So if we go completely remote out of a concern of exposure and trying to limit exposure, it's kind of contradictory to have adults in the building, although for instructional purposes, it makes the most sense to have adults in the classrooms, in the buildings to be able to, like we did for the first six weeks. They have access to better technology, they have a better environment to teach from, they have access to their materials, they have access to tech support if needed, access to each other to meet and talk. So there's a lot of that that comes into play. There's really, again, no matter which decision you make, it's like a Mad Lib almost. You know, the next, the next decision you have to make after that has another seven layers of choices to choose from. And then depending on which route you go down there, you got another seven barriers to figure out. So there's definitely, it doesn't have to be all or, or nothing at all. I don't, I don't think it has to be that. Certainly, within reason, supportive learning students in buildings significantly diminishes the number of potential exposures for students. It doesn't have to be a prolonged, hey, we're gonna get to Thanksgiving and then come back whenever we want. It's really what I think as a group, we feel is in the best interest of education, safety, health, and then our community. And that, that's the problem is none of us have a crystal ball. So that's the challenge.
Peter, Paul Hagerty, the supported learning in-school group, were they all located at Joy or was there, was there more than one school involved with there?
Every building with the exception of Stokes is involved with supportive learning students attending school. And if I can, I'm sorry, Paul, I wanna, I had a remembrance of something Tanya mentioned, so the group is aware. When we have closed buildings up till now, we've done both, nobody in the building and people can report to work. And the difference between the two is if there was an exposure in the building, we've shut the building completely down. No staff report except for the administration, the clerical to man the phones to help parents and the custodians to clean. If the concern is a staff shortage, which has caused the building to close, we've asked the staff to report because in that situation, it's not as much of a safety concern as it is a, we don't have the adults to cover all the students in the building. So we've done both, staff in the building, no staff report based on what the reason for the closure is.
Okay, so if, if I understood your answer, you're saying that almost all of our buildings were involved with supported learning, bringing the students in during the first six weeks. So if we continued to do that, then we would be bringing some students into all of our buildings. In addition, if we followed where our remote staff would still be working from the buildings, we'd have those staff in there, right? So we'd still be vulnerable, wouldn't we? If, if somebody gets infected in a, in a given building, the contact tracing might take that whole building, depending on how the, I don't know how exactly how they do that, whether they try to maintain separation within the buildings amongst the, the staff that are there so that you could say, well, this person was isolated, therefore, you know, they're, they're not going to contact trace to other people in the building, or maybe not. It, uh, I guess the point I'm getting at is the remote option is not without problems or, or risk, I should say, not problems, but risk.
Yeah, you are correct. The difference is you have less students in the building, which helps the student minimization. The other issue, and this came up this morning with the administrators, by and large, the principals reported that during the first six weeks, there was less staff interaction during the day and throughout the day than there has been with students in the building. That during the full remote model, more, more staff were working from their rooms in isolation and not really mingling too much. You can say that's a byproduct of kids being back in the building. You can also say it's a byproduct of, as human beings, we're all guilty of this, I'm certain, in the past eight months. At a, at a certain point in time, you get somewhat more comfortable with the way the new environment is, and you revert back to some old habits. So you may be more sociable with people than you were four months ago. And I, I don't think any human being is free of, of saying that. At some point in time in the past eight months, we've done something that was more like it was last year. And I would imagine that as I have throughout the process, every now and then, you get more comfortable and you lower your guard a little bit, and you might go into a room of four teachers to have a conversation that you might not have done seven months ago. So I can't really say why. People may or may not be mingling more right now, but that was a point that the principals made this morning was that it did appear that more people separated themselves in the first six weeks than they have in the past four.
And I guess obviously, if we were to go to, to the all-remote model, we'd encourage that, right? Having the individual people that are working in the buildings try to sequester themselves such that they wouldn't be mingling with any, any more than the required number of people. My final comment, at least for this section, is, you know, it seems like there's kind of a national, national fear of the there's kind of a nation, national, national fear of the holidays and what's going to happen on top of what's already happening because of the potential for a lot of social gatherings and whatnot. Are the districts that are closing, are they trying to get by the holidays and, and just see what the situation is and then reopen and not have to deal with the, a lot of infestation during that period of time? Or, or is it just coincidental that they, they're all opting to go remote right now? Or considering going remote, I should say, a lot of them haven't made the decision, but it sounds from like tonight's paper that there's three or four locally that are, you know, New Hartford, Holland Patton and so forth are, are seriously considering going remote. Totally.
Yes, good question. Uh, I can speak to both locally, uh, statewide and nationally. This week I was involved in a conference call with a group of superintendents nationally. Most districts around the nation are looking to get to Thanksgiving and then shut down for probably to the middle of January. And the reason I say that, um, every district is different, but uh, in New York state, our, our percentages of positive cases are significantly lower than most other states, uh, nationwide. The superintendents that I was referring to are from Illinois, they're from California, they're from, uh, Georgia, North Carolina, Midwest type states. So if you look at the numbers in those regions, they're a lot higher than New York state. So I don't know that I would, I would follow the national trend on that, um, only from the sense that their, their case, uh, percentages and their positive case numbers are significantly higher than New York if you're looking at scientific data. Uh, on a statewide basis, um, I don't know of many districts statewide that are voluntarily choosing to go all remote outside of those that are in an orange or a yellow zone currently. Uh, New York City has returned to all remote learning, but I believe they are in an orange zone. I know Western New York has several districts, uh, today that were deemed orange, uh, zone, and I believe they went remote. Uh, if you look, uh, very close to us, Nana Doga County, the districts there that are in the yellow zone, they're choosing to do the testing and try and persevere through, uh, the yellow zone restrictions. So, uh, statewide at least, there's no districts that I'm aware of that have voluntarily gone completely remote, to try and get through the unknowns. Regionally, as you know, there are a lot of districts talking about, um, going completely remote voluntarily, uh, to get through the unknowns. I, what I would tell you about that goes back to my initial conversation, um, to open the meeting, is that Oneida County right now, uh, while we are working very closely with, um, the county executive, there's still a lot of uncertainty about the availability of testing if we were deemed to be yellow zone. Uh, what happens with testing if we're deemed to be yellow zone and because we're teetering on that brink of disaster, most of us, and I'm included in this, I'm in, I'm of the opinion that it's best for our parents, our students and our faculty and staff, if we make the choice voluntarily so we can prepare, give more notification, uh, set firm dates rather than say all of a sudden, uh, on a Thursday night at six P M. Oh, by the way, we're yellow zone starting tomorrow, we're out of school. Or we're, you wonder whatever that is. I think that if we voluntarily made the decision, we can help provide better resources, give people time to prepare, have better information. So that's, that's essentially where we're at on a local, state and a national level on that one. Tanya?
So I, um, I want to share two different things. One is pertaining to what you were just saying about the testing. I am friends with a couple of people who, um, are with this, this city and the county who did, they are uncertain. This is uncertain as to whether or not our Department of Health can actually support the testing. And you brought up the most important point when you opened tonight, which was saying, we can't force people to test. And I've had several parents say to me, if you say testing is mandatory, my kid's not coming to school. So to your point, one, that's an enormous cost. I don't even know what the cost is per test. I guess from a board perspective, we'd really need more information on that cost. Second, is it even feasible? Because my understanding is our county health department, people can't get in touch with them because they can't keep up with the load of what we have now. Leah, I don't know if you can speak to that from what you're experiencing, but that is the very real concern. You know, if we go yellow, if we go orange, choices go outside of our hands and being proactive and into the hands of the county and state and the protocols that were set forth for us over the summer. So, so that is my one concern is that if we, if we have to provide testing, I just fiscally and, and logistically, I don't, I don't know how that looks for us. Additionally, there are some, you brought up the point and a couple of people are messaging that, um, the reason that teachers are more mobile and more interacting is before, when a teacher was teaching and there were no kids, there was no monitor coming into their room to oversee lunch. There were no teachers with specials pushing in their room to teach specials. They weren't moving their kids throughout the building. So a teacher would get to school and be in their room and teach remotely and that was it. And if someone else had to pick up and teach reading or teach art, they were doing it from their room and their computer or from home. So we by our very nature, particularly in the elementary, created this environment where the adults are more interactive with each other by the requirements of their job to serve the kids. That being said, I, I cannot stress enough how on the fence I am about this. Because from a social emotional perspective, if we were just talking about the education of kids, yeah, of course they're better off in school. But we're talking about a crisis that was invisible to a lot of people. I mean, the governor kind of alluded to it today. Some people haven't experienced it, their community hasn't experienced it, it's been okay for them. And we were a little bit of that and now suddenly it's getting out of control and, and it's getting a little scary. And no, it doesn't seem to be affecting kids, but not for one second do I want to be the district that suddenly has a critically sick child. So I'm sorry, I know that's a lot of thoughts. I still don't know the right answer, but I, I tend to think being proactive is the right thing. We did really well for our first six weeks. I don't know.
Uh, John, I saw your hand there. I didn't know, Leah, I didn't know if you raised your hand, but I just want to make a quick, uh, comment about what Tanya just said. I agree, uh, it does not appear to be affecting kids, but I do want to mention, um, just so we don't lose sight of it, we talked about this as a board a lot publicly in the month of August, uh, when we made the decision to go completely remote, uh, while it might not appear to be affecting kids, we cannot forget that there's still a large asymptomatic population with this virus. And we have plenty of people, uh, that are testing positive who, uh, really are, uh, getting tested out of an abundance of caution and then finding out that they tested positive with no symptoms. I will tell you that the adults that I've spoken to on our staff that, um, have tested positive have seemed to experience some symptoms. Uh, the symptoms are what caused them to have concern in the first place. So I don't know, I'm not a scientist, I'm not a doctor, I don't know what the percentage of asymptomatic, uh, positive cases to, uh, regular positive cases are. It'd be nice to find that information somewhere. But, uh, we do need to recall that there is a large portion of asymptomatic people with this virus, which makes it even more challenging to safeguard again. I just want to make sure that we reminded folks of that. Leah, did you have a comment and then Jonathan after?
Yeah, I just, two quick things. Um, one, we have to remember that, um, for every positive, that means that there are potentials exposing not just people within our school district, but within our community. And we have a very small percentage of our local community that can provide health support. So the decisions that are made within the district have ramifications in the whole city. I just want us to keep the seriousness of that in mind. It's not just about, um, you know, the kids and the rate of transmission from kid to kid. This is pretty serious. Um, the other thing that I wanted to ask, just as a level-setting question and to set the purpose of this meeting, is the purpose of this meeting just to disseminate information? Because in the summer, our scope was not defined as being the decision makers of whether or not we should close or open. So is the conversation today to try to assess what the board's take is on this? I mean, ultimately the decision is up to you. So I just want to make sure that we're not playing armchair administrators and trying to make this decision.
Thank you, Leah. The purpose of the meeting is to be able to have a public conversation so you guys can ask questions, um, about, about what's going on. I know that people have different opposing viewpoints and concerns. Transparency is a part of it, uh, to understand that we all know that, uh, tough decisions are coming about what to do next. But the rumor mill swirls fast and furious. Uh, you know, I've heard anywhere from on Monday, people saying we won't be in school by Thursday, to people saying we're going to have kids back in school five days a week after Thanksgiving. So I felt the best to have this conversation in public so people could know the reality. Whether or not they want to listen to or watch the meeting and believe the reality, it looks like at least two hundred people will have heard firsthand what, uh, we're talking about and what the thoughts and concerns might be. Uh, where Facebook takes it after that, I don't know. I don't control that. But, um, I do think it was important at least to have the conversation. It's important for me and my team to, uh, hear, hear the thoughts of the board, gauge the understanding. Because, you know, to, to think that anybody that works here has had a better than a four or five hour night's sleep in the past seven months is, uh, is fooling yourself. We're lucky if we get a, you know, a few hours a night. It's certainly not an easy and non-stressful time, but it is helpful to know, you know, where the thought process is of the, the Board of Education, because you do speak to people in the community just as much as we do and we all get different perspectives. So, uh, it's good to know where that is. I don't anticipate the board making a decision or making an ultimatum or demand tonight. Uh, I also don't plan on making any form of a statement or, or, um, announcement about where, uh, we're going to go tonight. But it is helpful for me to just know kind of where we, we feel and, um, helps me to think about what we need to do next, for sure. Jonathan, go ahead.
Yeah, I think you spoke a moment ago about the situation we keep putting our parents in when try to stay open. And I, uh, you know, everybody's echoed the same sentiment. Ideally, kids are in school, getting an education that we have designed for them over, you know, a century of doing public school, but that's not possible. And I think the position we're putting our parents in by telling them on Monday that their kid's going to school later in the week and then we cancel, how are they finding childcare? Are they calling into work? I mean, you know, I don't speak to ninety-nine percent of the district, right? I don't know what the average experience is, but I think the reality is there's no average experience. I think what you said a moment ago, which is design our plan in a proactive way and that allows people to take control of their life. And by, you know, maybe you've got to fold in, if you're lucky enough to be able to, other family to take care of the kids while you go to work. I feel more comfortable signing off on that as a board member or, 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 you know, saying, cool, do it. Because I know that by closing the schools, we're shutting down all sorts of different interactions in our community that could ultimately get grandma sick later. And like you said, it's not, it's not the kids getting sick necessarily. And, and thank goodness for that. I think we'd all have a very visceral reaction to that and maybe we would be more aggressive. But the point is, it's the caretakers, it's the babysitters, it's, uh, everybody else. And I just think that we could really give our parents a lot more authority in, in this if we say this is what we're going to do and we do it early bef- before getting shut down by the D O H or whoever. I mean, I, I just would love to see parents, you know, and, and not every parent is going to agree with me. That's the hardship that we face. But we have to give them the ability to operate functionally.
So, so I guess, Peter, that being sad, I mean, I have to, that's what's hard about all this, right? No one knows what to effect. So I think that it's important that whatever decision we make, um, particularly if it's a, an, an extended period of virtual learning again, um, that we look at some of the issues that have already come up from between September and now. We know things that worked, like we know that that abbreviated day for the high school was awesome. The kids were more engaged. We know that K through two struggles, so I think we should be thinking about whether or not we need to look at a different format for our youngest learners. Because that's causing stress for the parents and the educators and the students. I know you've stressed, we're still talking about issues with attendance. I think maybe, I think you and I talked about this offline, that, um, Google has added some enhancements that should make it more possible for kids to have their camera on so that teachers can see that the kids are engaged. I know at one point during a meeting you had mentioned if we were, you know, in a position to do so, that maybe we could look at some type of drop-in program for our virtual learners if, if the, um, childcare is, you know, I, I mean, I feel like that's still part of the governor's requirement is for essential workers that there has to be some type of option. So I hate being paralyzed by what we can't do when we can also focus on what we can do and that there have been some learning successes. I know that we're looking at this of day-to-day, the kids being in school has varied. You know, the kids that have signed up for hybrid aren't necessarily there, but they are getting on virtually. So there is a positive to that. They're not dropping off altogether. If a parent's not comfortable or if a child is showing symptoms, they keep them home and they put their kid online. But to Jonathan's point, I, what's, what's a better alternative? Day-to-day wondering if you're going to send four letters like you did this afternoon? Or knowing that we're coming into this unpredictable season of interaction, do we just make better choices and make, tweak the system a little bit from what we've already learned for the last three months?
Jordan, uh, you had your hand up.
I just have a question. Um, so if we do decide to go all remote in the future, have we narrowed down the options as to what it's going to look like, if it's going to be extended, like, has it been? That I know there's tons of different ways we could do it. You could do it until after Thanksgiving, you could do it until the end of January. Has it been narrowed down as to what, what would be the best and in the best interest for the whole district? Or have we not gotten there yet?
Good question, Jordan. We have not gotten there yet. I think regionally, most people are looking at getting through the vacation week where people might travel or, uh, do certain things. So for instance, the big concern about the week after Thanksgiving, uh, and this is, this is where the opinions come into play. If you're talking about it from a staffing perspective, the week after Thanksgiving, the week after New Year's are going to be a concern. If people travel to places they shouldn't be traveling to and then wind up quarantined, then we don't have the staff to staff the building. If you're concerned about the virus, it's not the week immediately following the vacations you should be concerned about. It's the second week following the vacations you should be concerned about because the incubation period is so long that one week isn't enough time to make sure that you're safe from that. So realistically, uh, it, it all depends on the perspective that you're looking at. Am I concerned about, uh, shortage of staff? The week after our, uh, Thanksgiving break there and then the winter reset, uh, in January for staff shortages? I'm not. I have the full confidence in our staff that they are going to do what they're supposed to do. Uh, if they are traveling out of state to visit a loved one, uh, we have had a few people already notify us of that so we can prepare ahead of time. Uh, there are rules in place that they can get tested and come back to work in a quicker fashion. I have the utmost, um, utmost, uh, confidence in our staff to be professional and make sure they're available to work when we need them to work. I'm not as concerned about that as I am about exposure. Uh, you know, some families are still going to have large gatherings. And by large, I mean six, eight to eight people can be considered large depending on who you are. Some people are still going to have gatherings of twenty people in their house. It's what they do, it's what they, uh, want to do. Uh, you can't stop that from happening. Uh, and that's not my place to tell people they can or cannot. And if that happens, it's the, the more people, the higher the exposure rate. Just because you have twenty people doesn't mean anybody's going to be sick. Uh, just because you have six people doesn't mean everybody's going to wind up healthy. It really does not matter how many people you have, just the more people, the more possible exposure. So to answer your question- So to answer your question, we have not gotten there about talking about a short-term closure versus a long-term closure. What I would tell you on a personal level, for consistency of families and staff, an extended closure to probably get through the entire month of December would be more likely for us for consistency's sake than having, hey, we're going to be off for a couple of weeks, then we're going to be on for a couple of weeks, or back off for a couple of weeks when you know. We've seen it the past couple of weeks, we saw it today. A quick rash of quarantines shuttered our buildings for a couple of days. That's likely to happen again. You're also talking about the thick of flu season. If you can all recall back to last December, not in our direct vicinity, but just to the east of us, we had elementary schools closing for whole weeks at a time due to the flu. They think it was the flu back then, maybe it was in early COVID, I don't know. But just last year alone, we had school closures for weeks at a time due to the flu. So we know that this time of year causes illness to begin with. I think consistency is more important if we're going to go completely remote. Consistency and knowing what to expect is more important than saying, we're going to go for a week. If, you know, if it looks good, we'll try to open up again. To Jonathan's point, I think it was Jonathan, it might have been Lee, you know, on Monday, Sunday night, it looked like Joy was going to be able to reopen tomorrow. Late this afternoon, it looked like due to the quarantine numbers, they can't open tomorrow. So that goes to the point of, as a parent, you know, you expect to be able to have that school open and all of a sudden we can't. I'd rather do something that is predictable and consistent versus stop and go.
Peter, something we haven't talked about tonight is is our thoughts about what's the most effective educational process? Is it the remote or is it the hybrid system? Admittedly, we have very limited experience with the hybrid since we've only been in that mode for approximately four weeks, which is not very much, especially the way we're implementing it. But I know, I know a lot of the parents and the people that are very pro keeping the schools open, you know, feel there's real value in the schools being open vice the remote educational process. And they seem to be seeing it in their, in their students, even in this brief, you know, return to in-school that we've experienced over the last four weeks. Can we say anything definitive about that? Is the one clearly preferable to the other, given, you know, certain considerations? The pluses and minuses, I know even Jordan, you know, in our last meeting spoke to that in terms of some positives. She mentioned the consistency associated with the remote model versus the touchy-feely kind of stuff that, you know, that now she's back in school. So could we, could we spend a little time on that?
Yeah, and the minute you started talking, I thought back to Jordan last Thursday night. Jordan spoke eloquently about this exact topic. And it's going to be a matter of personal opinion. Because even what hard data you have, there's a element of subjectivity in that data. So I will speak from my personal opinion based on feedback from staff members, teachers, administrators. I think most students are going to tell you exactly what Jordan said. I'll give her a chance to reiterate herself tonight if she would like to. But there's some things that are very good about it in person, and there's some things that are a challenge, but people are doing the best that they can. Most teachers I have talked to, not all, but most, have felt that the complete remote experience was a better educational environment than the hybrid. And that's because it's consistent for them, it's consistent for the students, and they are realistically and expectedly more comfortable with that, okay? That's not to say that another four weeks of hybrid learning, those same teachers wouldn't say hybrid's better because now they're more consistent with it, they've had more practice, the kids are more understanding it. But as of right now, by and large, more staff are more comfortable feel that remote is better educationally and instructionally. However, the, what you will hear from the both administrators and teachers is that from a non-educational perspective, from a social, emotional, mental health well-being, the hybrid learning is way better. In fact, the number one reason to keep schools open from the administrators today was that social, emotional, mental health, the human interaction is necessary for kids. Specifically, Mr. LeBaron at the high school made an advocacy that we need to stay open for the simple fact that when we were completely remote, the number of situations that the staff were dealing with of mental health crisis was far significant in a complete remote model than it has been in the hybrid. So you go right back into the what is the better thing to do? Do you do what's better instructionally and educationally? Or do you do what's better from a mental health, social, emotional standpoint? Because they are not one and the same. And I don't know if they've ever been one and the same for schools. I do think that schools are an environment where human interaction, access to each other, whether it be student to student, adult to adult, or adult to student, is important, and you can't deny that fact. So again, anecdotal, you know, I don't know if Mr. Brewer has anything different on the topic. I think, Jordan, if you don't mind reiterating kind of what you did last Thursday, there's obviously way more people on tonight than was on that meeting. But anecdotally, I think most staff feel instructionally, remote is better. But social, emotional, mental health-wise, hybrid is far superior to the remote model.
Jordan, are you?
Yeah, I didn't know.
Thought maybe you were waiting to be recognized.
No, no, it's okay. I think that either way you look at it, there's pros and cons. Socially, mentally, socially, it's much better to be in school, obviously no doubt about it. But then you look at the other side of it where it's a lack of consistency. I mean, teachers have one group of students in school for two days a week, and then they get the whole other half a class. And it's difficult to teach online and in-person at the same time. And I, like Mr. Blake said, there's no good answer. There's not one that fits both of those questions. But I think that the biggest thing is that you have to look at what's going to be the most beneficial in the, in the long run. So I mean, you could look at that from both perspectives. But I think as a whole, a lot of the, all teachers are trying their best, are doing the best they can. Some feel more comfortable with one than the other. But the remote model is definitely much more consistent educational-wise. But the hybrid model is definitely much more consistent socially. And then I think we have to take into account the elementary school students, how this all plays into them, which, I mean, I can't give that much of a talk to. I mean, I don't know personally, but I think that, I know there's some comments coming from parents in terms of what's better for elementary kids. I mean, if they want to sit on a computer all day, but be consistent or be in school two days a week and get the social factor, but not necessarily the same educational.
Thank you, Jordan. John, you had your hand up. John Nash?
Thanks, Paul. Yeah, a couple of things. First, yes, I'm going to be, it's a very difficult decision, I get that. And what I'm concerned about by going totally remote would be, you have your students that are in the lower socioeconomic stream, and I think they're going to really get hurt by going totally remote. They don't have the resources to assist them. Parental supervision is probably not there because they have to work. So I'm concerned about that. And secondly, I guess I'm not sure, Peter, if you took a survey or not, but you said that most, most teachers prefer to go totally remote. I'm not sure that's true or not. I'm wondering if you had to the survey or not? Because teachers I talked to, they kind of prefer at least seeing the students a couple of days a week. But I know it's contrary than whatsoever, everything else I've been saying, but I definitely understand both sides. But I'm just worried about the children themselves and their education and socialization.
Thanks, John. You're misinterpreting what I said. I didn't say teachers want to be remote. I said instructionally, they prefer to do full remote. So from a teaching standpoint, full remote is a better instructional model than the hybrid. I do agree with you that most teachers would tell you they prefer to see the kids at least a couple of days a week, and for that reason, they want to stay open. So that's not the same, they're not one and the same, but thank you for mentioning that. So if I was not clear to you, it clearly was not clear to everybody else as well. So there is a big difference between what is the best instructional model in terms of delivering education and instructing kids and what they would prefer to do relative to their preference of being open or closed. I would agree with you. The vast majority of teachers, and I get the messages every day, I hope the rumors about going remote are not true because we need to see the kids. I need to see my kids, we got to be in building, the kids got to be here. I get the same messages probably that you all hear on those fronts as well. And there's certainly folks that feel remote is the best option for their own personal opinions as well. But thank you for mentioning that so I could clarify.
Peter, do we have any information that indicates that attendance-wise, the one model is working better than the other? In terms of actually, you know, students participating in the, in the school process, either remotely or with the hybrid model?
So the attendance data is, it's a little skewed because the way it's entered into School Tool and the School Tool itself is being built while we're operating it, the way you pull information out of it is not exactly great yet. But anecdotally, and by some of the numbers, attendance was better in the remote option. There was more students participating when we were completely remote than we are currently. Attendance overall, still about 92%. It was about 95% remotely. What I have heard and what you do see when you look at the attendance is that more students that are supposed to be attending in person are not coming to school and attending completely remotely. They just are not indicating that. So for instance, Stroud, the middle school, they believe about 50% of the students are actually coming to school that are supposed to be coming to school on a daily basis for A and B. RFA, the number is about 70% of the students are attending that are supposed to be attending. However, if they don't come in person, they are checking in online at least. So it's not like the kids are just blown off school and not doing anything. They're just not coming in person when they're supposed to, but they're hopping on online. So they're doing their learning that way. The elementary schools, the attendance has been pretty high for the in-person piece except for the schools that have had to be closed for a period of time. Those principals are reporting about a 30% drop in attendance following a school closure related to COVID, whether it be because of exposure or a staff shortage. So once the school reopened, there is a drop in the attendance rate for in-person students. But again, they are hopping on online and participating that way.
So technology has not been an issue for us in terms of, you know, certain families or students not being familiar or having the accessibility in the remote model that others do, other families?
To date, we've had, I think, three families that we've had some connectivity issues with. We've been able to help them through that, but devices are not an issue. And connectivity has not been an issue, no, that we're aware of.
Okay, well, I was just going to say, it sounds like you're going to try to make it through Thanksgiving, and you're thinking about possibly going remote in December? I mean, is that, is that my understanding, or is that what I'm, am I hearing that right, or?
Not necessarily. I was saying, if we went remote, I would, I would get to Thanksgiving and for consistency's sake, try and make it through those worst months. I've had this conversation with some of you offline. On a personal level, as I watch the people having to do the work in the buildings with the hybrid learning, when I watched the amount of stress that contact tracing causes, the few of us that have to do it, the amount of personal well hygiene that's falling off and the mental stress that's causing some of our staff to stay open and try and get by every day on a personal level. Peter Blake on a person would say shut it down until February, come back after February recess and let people really understand what's happening and make sure that everybody can stay calm, can work under as minimal stress as possible so that we're not having to run risks of major issues happening. But that's me as a personal opinion. My job is not to utilize my personal opinion. My job is to do what's in the best interest of the community and the district. Professionally, I would tell you that we need to persevere, continue on the way that we've got it going on and hope for really the best with the quarantining. There is not enough evidence, in my opinion, to warrant the virus being an issue in the schools on a professional level. I do think that our staff, our students and families are doing everything they possibly can to minimize risk and exposure. However, that doesn't mean we're going to be able to keep schools open because of quarantining issues. And we've saw that. So on a professional level, where I'm sitting on it is, do I think we can make it through with minimal virus concerns? I do. Do I think we can make it through with quarantine issues? I do not. And so then we're weighing the consistency issue of, do you keep playing this game where Monday you're okay, by Tuesday you have to close down a few schools for a couple of days because of quarantining? Or, you know, in the case of RFA, we're short until November 30th. You know, that's the game that you have to try and figure out. Is it better to be consistent for the students, families and staff and make that decision proactively? Or do you wait to be told you have to go completely remote? So that's kind of where I'm stuck on that level. If that made any sense to you, Lisa.
Yeah, John, I did see you raise your hand. I just wanted to make a comment based on what Peter just said. The, it seems like to date, given the situations that we know about, that most of our issues have to do with things that are somewhat out of our control. They're like, they're in the environment, they're, you know, things that are happening outside of school, but they get reflected into the school, especially with the contact tracing and affect a whole bunch of things that, that really, you know, shut down the school because we don't have people making food or, you know, something like that. And of course, that's also something that we have very little control over unless we're mind readers and can figure out how the public is going to, you know, act over the next month or so. So it's, it is, it is a difficult, and I don't have the answer to it. I just, I think it's something that's puzzling everybody is, you know, why people are not acting differently in the, in the general public, given the fact that there's an overwhelming amount of evidence. But, but they aren't in a lot of cases, and that's unfortunate. John?
Yeah, actually, we're on the same tangent here, Paul. Because my question really is for Peter is that, are we as one of the, I think, the largest employer in the city, doing what we can do to make this easy for people to do the right thing? And I think ideally, we want to say yes, but is the reality meeting that? If somebody says I have an exposure risk, and the DOH tells them you have an exposure risk, do they stay home? Well, I'm not symptomatic, I'm going to go in. I can't really use my time right now, I'm going to go in. If they're remote, yeah, maybe they work and they're not symptomatic, and they still get to quarantine. And that's what's right for our community. That's what's right for the people, you know, to make on an individual level. Well, we can't make it a hardship for them to make that decision. And I don't think we're doing it intentionally. But Peter, if you could just speak to what the process is, if somebody has an exposure risk, high or low, they're told to quarantine, and then what? What do they have to do? Use their personal time? What's the process?
Great question. And I'm going to elaborate on a big, on a, on a big-picture level for the board and the community on that. So if I read, if I'm redundant from previous conversations, I apologize, everybody. First and foremost to that question, John, if they're told by the Department of Health to quarantine, we receive a phone call, whether they're a student or a staff member, that they are under quarantine, we're giving their quarantine date and when they are released to come back to work. If they are a staff member required to quarantine by the Department of Health, there is a federal legislation that allows them 14-day paid quarantine. So we pay them to quarantine. They're allowed to have that. So we pay them to quarantine. They're allowed to have that once during the course of the year. And this expires December 31st, by the way. So if, for right now, all of our staff hypothetically should be covered by that, okay? Let's say that we get into January, February, and the staff members required to quarantine a second time. They would not be eligible for that federal pay. They would then have to quarantine using their own sick time or take an unpaid leave of absence. And that's kind of how the process of being paid or unpaid works out. So you are not, you are correct when you say that if I'm asymptomatic and I'm suggested that I quarantine or that I want to, or I was told to quarantine and I'm going to ignore it. Usually, a staff member can only do that until the Department of Health calls up, which, as I mentioned earlier, unfortunately, they're pretty swamped. That could be six days later. That could be a huge fallout ripple effect. Speaking about the community at large and what is the safest and best thing for the community? Safest, obviously, from a professional standpoint, remote is the safest way for our community to minimize spread. We are the number one player. We are the number one gathering place right now for anybody. Schools are really the only place and places of worship where you can have more than 50 people in a place at a time. That's a that's a reality. However, economically, when you start talking about whether you're not, you're remote, the factor that has to come into play right now that has not been into play in a while is there are not unemployment benefits for people to fall back on if we go completely remote for an extended period of time. And they've got to find childcare options or might cause community members their job. Now, what are we doing to our community that way? The other piece that I would say is if we are remote for an extended period of time, the district, in an effort to make sure we're safeguarding against budget crisis in a few months, we would probably furlough staff that cannot work remotely. Unlike the springtime where we were required to keep everybody on staff throughout that process, regardless of what their jobs were, we would have to look at furloughing a large portion of our staff to make sure that we had some money that we're setting aside for possible rainy days to come in the next year, seven years.
So that kind of segues nicely into my question, Peter. So as far as state aid goes, is there an is there an impact one way or another if we stay open or if we if we go fully virtual in terms of aid down the road? That's question number one. Question number two, I speak to a local official about the new yellow zone rules, and they had mentioned that the county not only would assist in helping to pay for the tests, but also providing personnel to help administer them. Is that is that something that you had a discussion with and what exactly would that involve? You know, how involved would they get with that?
Thanks, Joe. I'm gonna go backwards on your question. What you just mentioned about the county is the same understanding that I have. They are willing to assist with getting the test and administering the test. I have not had any conversation about the county covering the costs associated with getting the samples read and determined. However, that doesn't mean that the county is not willing to assist at that level as well. From my conversations, the concern for testing right now is the county is concerned that the state may or may not actually provide the tests necessary to do the testing. But that's to be determined. On the state aid side, I've tried to do some homework today on this. I had a great conversation with Senator Griffo to try and get a better handle on the state aid piece. The Department of Education and superintendents are hearing concerns that it is possible that districts could be penalized for the number of optional remote learning days they utilize during the course of this school year as reflected in next year's state aid run. Meaning, if a district is voluntarily remote for 40 days out of the course of the year, it's possible that the governor may utilize that as a way to reduce state aid for schools rather than just arbitrarily saying 20% is what you're getting cut. They might use that remote number as their justification to reduce aid. That is what we are hearing on the educational side. In talking to Senator Griffo, he said he has not heard that in Albany, which is a good sign. He does not feel that that would be the case, and he's pointing towards possible federal stimulus monies that could be coming. A lot of those conversations and decisions are going to hinge on what happens at the federal level with relief and aid in the coming months. So we're not quite there yet to have a total answer on that. I also can tell you that we have our contacts inside the governor's office when asked that exact same question. Their response was, that's a good question. We don't have an answer for you, but we do know the governor would like kids in school. So depending on how political you want to get on this one, reading between the lines, I would I would say that it's more likely that there could be a penalty for remote learning than there couldn't be. How likely that is, I'd put the percentages at 51% more likely and 49% less likely. It really could go either way right now.
I guess that's what's really making this so much more difficult than it already is. And it's already an impossible question to try to answer is that, you know, you hear a message from the governor saying, you know, we don't want eight people gathered for Thanksgiving, and we're going to penalize you for that, but we'll also penalize you if you don't send hundreds of school kids to school to spend time together. And it's these types of messages that are that are just making this decision so much more horrible and difficult to make.
Yeah, and for the record, for those folks on the call that don't follow the daily politics in Albany of the governor, he has not verbatimly said that he's going to penalize schools for the remote learning piece. I just want to make that clear. That's the interpretation and the messages that we're hearing that could happen. I will say, if you watched his press conference today, he was pretty ornery, for lack of a better term, when he was questioned about orange zone and yellow zone schools. He was pretty hard on the reporters questioning about schools and making it very clear that the state has done everything they can to help schools stay open and that schools being open or closed is a local decision and that he's not getting involved in that.
Tanya?
I've been holding onto a question, but first I just want to say that when we're virtual, school's not closed. School hasn't been closed. It's just been operating differently. And we've just said, and the national data shows that if we can get kids to log in, their learning is definitely more consistent. But the point I wanted to make was to, a few minutes ago, and a couple of people have posted comments. I'm the socioeconomic piece of this is very interesting to me. And again, looking at the state and countrywide data, it seems to be the economically disadvantaged that seem to be more reluctant to come to school. And they're, they don't know what to attribute that to, but it seems possibly that these people don't know how they would afford it if they or their family household member had to be hospitalized. But that reading, that has been very interesting to see. But looking at the data that you sent us today, our three schools that we know struggle more only have about 58 to 66% of kids that opted to return hybrid. And a couple of our schools that we would traditionally tend to look at as less economically disadvantaged and not on our S A list have an 85 and 86% return rate. So it actually, in our own district, appears to be that the households with two-income families were the ones that were more likely to return. I mean, the Stroud return rate, based on the data you sent us today, when I say return rate, hybrid, was 60%, and RFA's is 64%. So not quite 5149, but I also need to say that I think you're right. 5149 is where we stand on this, and we could continue debating this all night. I don't know how we make a sound decision, except that ultimately, this comes down to saving lives. And to Lee's point about the effect on the community, if we do see these numbers continue to rise, can our hospitals and our medical staff support the fallout of what happens if the numbers do continue on their current trajectory? No crystal ball, I know, but something to think about.
Anyone else have anything? I think the the question that that's bothering me is the question of the the timing of doing anything, whether we're looking at an action that's going to be a long-term, you know, go remote until the spring or until whatever, you know, till things improve statistically with the virus? Or are we going to, you know, try to get through the the holiday season and the and the sort of acknowledged grouping of people and see what's what the situation is coming out of that? Or or vice versa? Are we going to wait until things get worse before we before we go to the remote model? I think those are interesting, you know, questions. One thing we haven't talked about at all today, but it's been in the news a lot lately, is the fact that there does seem to be a light at the end of the tunnel. There's an awful lot of good news relative to vaccines. The big issue seems to be when they might be available and when they might be effective in different scenarios, you know. I've heard discussions about, you know, for certain critical workers like healthcare people that that this could be very near term and for the general population, it could be quite a while before, you know, we have access to to a vaccine and all kind of things in between. I don't know if that's a really a factor in our in our conversation or not, or this decision or Peter's decision, but I just throw it out there if anybody else has got any comments about that. Okay, Paul Fitzpatrick?
Yeah, I've been kind of quiet here tonight, just listening to everything. But one of the first things that we heard tonight is that the schools are not the places that are spreading the virus. The schools are probably some of the safest places. My biggest concern about the hybrid model is that I know, I'm talking with many of my former associate teachers, is that they are totally stressed out. It's just not a very, very comfortable place. So there is no win-win situation here. I think for the kids, they're they're probably better off in the buildings. They want to be in the buildings. Teachers want kids to be in the buildings, but, you know, I understand with my own grandchildren and stuff that they are happier when they're in the buildings, less happy when they're they're on the screen. But I, you know, I don't have the answer. It's it's just something we're going to have to live with. We're all living with it throughout the whole country and the whole world. So but I just want to make it clear that the buildings are not the places where the virus is spreading. The buildings probably are one of the safest places to have our kids and our teachers and our staff if we can support it. And if we can't support it, then then we have to go remote. Otherwise, I like to see the kids in the building as much as possible.
Thanks, Paul. That reminds me that there might be another point of discussion that would especially benefit since we have about 200 people besides our participating board members with us tonight. And I don't know if Peter or perhaps Chris Brewer could talk about a little bit about how difficult the the model, the hybrid model is in terms of what the teacher has to contend with on a day-to-day basis. And I'll turn it over to you rather than making any comments myself.
Yeah, I think Paulie addressed that a little bit earlier in the sense that we asked what was the best model. I think it is not easy to do the hybrid piece. It's very challenging. By and large, the students that are in the building are being patient with the staff because they want to be there. And it's helpful to have the kids in the building. But the the juggling of who's in the building, who's on the remote end, how do I commit time back and forth between most, it's been a challenge. By and large, every day gets better because the more that the teachers are doing it, the more comfortable they get with it. Some people are plugging right along right now with it, and you wouldn't even know that they had a concern or ever had a concern. And others continue to struggle with it. It's no different than anything else that any human being tries to learn brand new. Some people pick it up pretty quickly and roll right with it, and other people take a little bit longer to master the skill. So I think most teachers would tell you it's extremely challenging. It's very taxing, as Paul Fitzpatrick had mentioned. It does take a lot out of them. People are people are tired. They're stressed out because they want to do the best. They want to do what's right for kids. They want to make sure their kids are getting the best possible education they can, and that takes a mental strain on anybody when you don't feel like you are performing up to your capabilities and you don't have control over really whether or not you can get better at those. So I think in general, everyone's doing a great job with it. It can always be better. The full in-person model a year ago could always have been better. That is the the way life works. None of us are perfect at what we do. If we keep working at it, we get better every day, no matter how long we've been doing it. So but I do think it's stressful. I do think it's challenging. And that's why I said, if you ask most teachers, they would tell you, instructionally, the remote model is a better instructional educational model because it's simpler and it's more consistent. That doesn't mean it's the best model to operate with kids under because I think, again, staff want to see the kids. The kids in the building is good for the kids' mental health. And reality, we haven't talked about this, but in a lot of cases, students being in the building is good for the staff's mental health as well. It gives them a more sense of normalcy. It gives them more of a more optimism when their kid's right in front of you telling you, hey, Mr. Blake, it's okay. You're struggling with this today. Let me help you through it. What can I do to help you? There's that element is there is an element of seeing kids in schools that is a positive uplifting element for the staff as well.
Peter, there is a couple of comments that I've that I've seen. One asked that if we went back to a fully remote schedule, would would Wednesdays be reinstated as an instruction day? And the other was, you know, would the district possibly consider making certain schools fully remote and maybe keeping elementary schools in the hybrid model?
What was the first part of the question, Joe? I'm sorry.
Well, Wednesdays, I right now are planning days, right, for the children, so they don't have to attend? So if we went back to a fully remote schedule, would that be reinstated as an instruction day? So would there be five five days? Would there be five days of instruction, I guess?
Wednesday should not be a planning day for teachers. They are required to provide new instructional material and work with kids, and kids have to check in on Wednesdays. So if that's happening and you're paying attention out there, you should contact your teacher or your school principal to have that conversation. Instruction and learning should be happening on Wednesday, although not in the same format as a full remote learning day would look. If we were five days remote, yes, it would look like it was back in the, I keep saying spring, sorry. It would look like it were the first six weeks of school. That's what we would do there. The second part of your question, I had it and then I lost it. I'm sorry, Joe. The second one was, what was your second part?
I was, would would there be some consideration given to, I guess, a hybrid hybrid model?
Yes, we would go completely remote for the secondary and keep the elementary schools in person. What I would say about that, if you just look right now, our issues for staffing the buildings have tended to be the elementary schools. Our elementary schools, outside of the one circumstance today at RFA and the one issue a couple of weeks ago at Stroud, the middle school and high school have tended to be much better relative to being able to maintain the staff and keep the the virus from affecting the school, whether it be through exposure or quarantine staff shortages. So I don't know that that would necessarily make a difference. I think the elementary schools have tended to be, outside of Stokes, Ridge Mills and Gansburg, who have yet to have any issues, knock on wood, neither of those three buildings have had any need to close for any reason yet. We tend to be okay at the high school and middle school. So I I think if we were going to do anything, it would be consistent for the elementary all the way through the secondary, just because that seems to be where the data is trending right now.
Peter, I just want to, you know, I've been documenting all of the questions and chat tonight. So I will make sure that you get all the questions that came through. Yeah, just so you're aware, and just so the public's aware, I have been documenting everything that they've
John?
Yeah, Peter. Have you had any, I don't know if it's not really a survey, but any feel for, I know there's certain subjects that are very difficult to teach online. Have you run across any information on that? May I happen to know somebody that teaches math and who tells me it's very difficult to teach math virtually?
No specific feedback on that. Again, I would I would boil that down to the individuals. I would say one of the top three math teachers I've ever encountered in my career was a high school teacher that taught everything online. The entire classroom was flipped. This was 10 years ago. So it really boils down to what the individuals are comfortable with. Some there's going to be people, English teachers, where you would think English is an easy subject to teach online, right? That are very uncomfortable doing it. It's very challenging, and that why that's why there's no good answer to what's best for everybody. Every kid learns differently. We've seen kids that were straight A students struggle with online learning the past several months and other students that we could barely get them to come to school. All of a sudden, they're on the honor roll because we're doing remote learning. And the instructions, the same way. Some teachers are really good at it. Other teachers, no matter what they do, are challenged with it. It doesn't matter. And I think we're all as human beings the same way. There's some technologies that we can all master pretty quickly, and there's other ones that we want to stay away from because it's tricky for us. So I don't have any direct feedback on that, John, but I I would agree with you. Not just subjects specifically, but some staff members, they operate best with the kids in the classroom, and that's their niche, and that it doesn't matter how much they're willing to want to learn. It doesn't matter how much we can train them. That's where they're good, and that's where their expertise is, and none of us are going to be able to really change that.
Okay. Any additional comments? Peter, do you have anything further that you would like to?
Just that I want to thank folks for their time tonight, their their conversation. It's always good to be able to have conversation with our fear or risk of an argument breaking out, and so I appreciate that. I would I would ask the board, and this might be a obviously, we don't make decisions outside of the public, but maybe just if we can come to some kind of a consensus on what the expectation for announcements might be that might be forthcoming. It'd be nice to be able to provide something concrete at some point, whether it be the board's expectation that I that I make communications by Friday or by Monday or Saturday, Sunday, Tuesday, whatever it might be. And it doesn't have to be done right now on the spot in public, but even if it was a a matter of in our in our group email, just saying, I would hope for this, so that I have some kind of a consensus of when the board would like to see me make decisions and get that out for the community, that would be helpful. And it can be in public if you want to put your guest selves through the gauntlet. That's up to you.
Well, I was just going to say that I don't know if I feel comfortable. I I'd like to get through to Thanksgiving, I guess, is is what I'm saying. Because at least that would give people a chance to, if we made the decision before then, they can deal with daycare or whatever they have to do if we decide to go to remote after Thanksgiving that following week. But you know, I'm okay with with whatever decision you make. I just hope it gives people enough time to do what they got to do.
Good point. So that would be within the next five school days.
And I think it's reasonable to say that, obviously, we know that parents do have that autonomy. If they don't feel comfortable, they don't have to send their child, you know, if their child is a hybrid student, and they decide that right now they don't want to send them, they can go virtually, like virtual class is happening. You know, I I've heard both sides of that. I've heard some say, thank you so much for doing cohort A Monday and cohort B Tuesday, so that all the kids fairly get their days. And then I've heard some say, it's just the two days, and the numbers are scaring me too much, so I'm just not going to send my child. That's a personal decision that that is available to them, thankfully. If there's a silver lining to all of this, it's you know, maybe maybe we are offering people an alternative when there's an extenuating circumstance. So I agree. I mean, obviously, we don't even have to think about RFA at this point. The announcement that came today is the biggest chunk of our kids, right? That's probably 1,000 of our in-person kids right now are the high school. So they already know that they're virtual through the end of the month. But I think it is, someone just messaged me and said, are you watching the news? Clearly did not know I was doing this. That New York City just announced that they're going completely virtual, and the parents are losing their mind because they had no advance notice. So it is reasonable that we try, I think, try to make a decision before the before the break so that parents have some time to plan and know, you know, what's going to happen in December is ultimately it. Believe it or not, we're almost at December already in the year that never ends.
I think if you need days to get your administrative Ps and Qs in order, but I think by the end of the week would be the best for the families, Peter. I mean, I don't know if that's enough time, but if it is, that would be best. I think the more time we can give people if if after Thanksgiving is the idea. I mean, I was coming into this meeting thinking Thanksgiving is weirdly far away, as one attendee points out. Elementary only have one day of school next week. So I mean, hey, you know, give people time. I think that's a good point from Lisa and Tanya.
Except to that point, if we're going to let teachers back in and let them teach, you know, if we decide that virtual the option, teachers do need time. If we're shutting everything and you're asking teachers to teach at home as well, they would need adequate time to plan and have their materials. If it's a decision about the kids, but the teachers still had access the way we did from September 14th to October 25th, you know, then they would have time to then compensate. So I think it is currently a harder, a harder corner to round for families who need childcare than the educators. You know, there 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 would be some cleanup we'd have to do depending on the decisions that we make. But I just, Peter, I appreciate that you took the time to have this forum because people people are either frustrated or fearful, and one way or the other, we being accessible to them, I hope helped that a little.
Peter, I just, I guess I want to be clear on this. Do you want direction from the board on the issue of whether we go fully remote or whether we stay hybrid? Because I mean, obviously, if we're if we're going to stay hybrid, then I don't know that we really need to do much more in terms of scheduling, other than to say that we're going to stay hybrid until New York State says we can't be hybrid anymore. But if we're going to go fully remote, then I guess we need to pick a time and at a timeframe as to when that's going to happen. So I guess I need to know exactly what you're looking for from us. And if you are looking for that direction, then I think that we as the board need to make a decision as to when we're going to sit down and and have that decision. And obviously, this is not, I don't believe, an executive session type of decision-making process. So I think we're going to have to do it in a public way, and we're going to have to just pick a day and and get it done. So, you know, please tell us what exactly that you're looking for from us. Are you looking for a directive?
Thanks, Joe. No, to Lee's point early on, really, the decision-making of this falls on the district administration. That's my job and my team's job. What I'm looking for from the board is simple input and thought processes to where all of you are. I think if we were to try to make any kind of a decision on that, I could probably tell each of you individually where you fall on the side of the fence of this conversation, and I don't think that we're going to reach any kind of consensus anytime soon on as a collective, what the right decision is, right? So that's why I end up being the the lucky one that gets to take the the decision-making responsibility, and that falls on my shoulders. That's right, wrong, or indifferent. This is one of those moments where it's not very fun to be the superintendent. There's other times in the job where you think your lucky star's the superintendent, and you're not somebody else in this organization, but this is not one of them. Superintendents all over the place are having to make these decisions. That's my job. I understand it. I'm just looking for input as to being able to express myself publicly to you guys in the community, as well as hear your feedback, get your reactions, and just help inform decision-making. So it's not done in a vacuum. My decisions are not absent the input of the board, but it is my decision that I have to make, and unless the board is going to say no, we're going to get involved in making this decision, which to date the board has not in this district, and many districts they don't, some have, but really, I was just looking for the conversation we've had tonight, so I have a better idea of which direction would be best to make sure we have support of our of the governing body that we can communicate to the community and feel confident that we're making a good, solid decision that people can wrap their hands around. Whether or not personally and opinionated wise, we all agree is one thing, but understanding that we can all be supportive of each other is really most important for me.
Okay, well, you know, it's not an easy decision. I know it's something that you've thought about, you know, endlessly up to this point, and and it's it's something that you're going to continue to think about. I don't know that the end of the week is is something that is realistic for you. I would like to see it's just something before we break for the for the Thanksgiving holidays, so that we can start planning for what comes in December, because, you know, thankfully, we're going to have a little bit of a break there and and school days that, you know, are going to be covered by holidays and vacations and whatnot. So I'd like to give you as much time as possible to make that decision. Simply because, you know, from day to day, you're getting different messages as to, you know, what 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 qualifies as the yellow zone and what what is, you know, what the restrictions are and what, you know, you have to do is, you know, what the requirements are as far as municipalities and schools go. So you know, as those continue to change, I mean, maybe we can wait to see if, at least a week, to see if they're going to keep these rules in place for at least a week's time so that that can give you or help give you some guidance as well. So personally, you know, I'd like to see the hybrid version continue. You know, the the numbers, I I asked at the beginning of the meeting what the numbers were, and if you if you've worked through the the math on that, I mean, you're looking at a 99.97% rate of non-infection going on in our schools and a zero hospitalization rate, you know, 0%. And I get the arguments, and I know that that's not maybe not a popular view at this point. But I think that, you know, as far as transmission rates, you know, there's really no good reason to close schools. That being said, I do understand the logistical problems that are being presented here and how difficult those are going to be to to meet. But you you told me professionally that you're up to the challenge, and you want to try to do it. And if kids are benefiting emotionally from going to school, then I think that we should we should try to give them the opportunity to continue to attend in a hybrid situation. So that's my two cents and and my input, and I'm not afraid to state it publicly.
Thank you, Joe. John Nash?
Yeah, I I echo Joe's concept there, Joe's thoughts. I agree. I would prefer to keep it going hybrid, and I would like to see as hard as it may be to have a decision right into the week, so these parents and these families know what's going to go on for the next few weeks after that.
I'd like to ask, Peter, I'd like to ask you a question, going back to what we talked about earlier. Make sure I understand what you said earlier, and that was in the remote model, you indicated that there would be a preference to keep the supported learning students, the special needs students in the buildings, attending school, and also keep the the teachers that are providing the the remote learning, working from the school buildings. Is that correct, or is that a variable that's you're also considering doing or not doing that?
If we were complete, if we were completely remote, we would look very similar to what we looked like the first six weeks of school. We would want our supported learning kids attending the buildings. We would want our staff in the buildings, working from their classrooms from the building for the same reasons that it worked well in the fall. That's not going to be the case for 100% of the people. Clearly, we're into that flu illness season, so we probably will see more just general illness colds, whatever, than we saw in the first six weeks. But to what you're talking about, yes, we want support learning kids in the building, and we would want staff in the building to work from the building as much as possible.
I think that's important to realize that the buildings are not going to be deserted, but they're going to be occupied, and they're going to be interacting at least adults, adults on adults and some special students. And therefore, the big difference is is whether there'll be any general education students in in the buildings or not. That's what we're talking about right now. It's not a third option to shut everything down. I just wanted to make that that that's what you were that you were considering. Thank you. Anyone else have anything further?
I just have one other question. Obviously, the most important thing that we have to do is make sound fiscal decisions. Is there a threshold upon which it is not cost-effective for us to keep the kids in the buildings? We do a lot in terms of disinfecting, transporting, all of those things, and again, you noted that as there have been positives in the days following, there's a big reduction in attendance. Going back to my earlier question, you know, there are people who just refuse testing. So if we go into this yellow zone where the only way to stay open is to test, we might again see a significant drop in attendance. Would that play into any decision that you might have to make, Peter, of the cost benefit, the literal cost benefit of what it takes to get kids into the building as opposed to as we have repeatedly said, the more consistent instructional option of keeping them virtual?
To date, I haven't really taken cost of keeping the buildings open into consideration. I have taken into consideration concerns about state cuts to funding and or possible future loss of revenue as a result of being completely remote. Obviously, if the state decides to cut funding by the end of December, which is the third look-back period, a cut in this year's current revenue may have an impact on whether or not buildings can stay open. Right now, we're doing pretty well with some of that things. I would tell you if our staff attendance continues to decline and decline and decline to a point where we need a lot of subs or the class coverage things are becoming more than we anticipated, that may play into it. But really, right now, if there's a staff shortage, we've been going remote for a day or two, and that allows the staff to work from home. The teachers and staff have been phenomenal at doing that. And it, you know, from their point of view, it's a benefit to them. They work remotely. They save a sick day or two. From our point of view, they work remotely. We save the sub costs and or the class coverage costs for the day. So really, it's a win-win when you look at that going remote due to a staff shortage. What unfortunately, who loses in that case is the kid by not being able to be in the building and have that learning experience. So you want to avoid the closure due to a staff shortage if at all possible. Some days, it's just not feasible. We are looking at trying to track the cost associated with the cleaning supplies, right? That continues to be a concern. What what is that running us to date? We haven't seen a huge increase. We tried to front-load all those costs and get supplies for the year back in the summer, which is pretty good right now, but that could change in a moment's notice.
So one thing that I'm hearing is when we do have subs or in some situations, when a teaching assistant is covering, they don't necessarily have access to that teacher's Google Classroom. So when there is an interruption where someone is not able to quarantine and provide instruction from home, So when there is an interruption where someone is not able to quarantine and provide instruction from home. A regular, uh, teacher or, you know, a regular classroom teacher. Um, there is an interruption to learning anyway, because that substitute can't go in and deliver the virtual instruction. So. Uh, again, it's just like a data piece to think about and then an instructional integrity piece to think about. Um, so we pay a lot of money to bring a sub into the building who can't even fully deliver instruction. That's a little concerning.
Well, what should be happening is that the teacher of record provides sub plans just as they would in a normal situation if they were out. The difference is they now have to do something for the in-person kids to provide plans for them and, uh, some asynchronous learning plan. Uh, what I would say in defense of, in defense of that, it's not easy as a teacher to navigate that new world. Uh, I imagine we're going to have a lot of bumps and bruises with, with that for the first several weeks until people kind of get their. Uh, sea legs underneath them with the new requirements. I think if you talk to any teacher, all of us would say it's always more work to be out. Uh, of the classroom than it is to be in the classroom because most times a substitute, uh, if you think back to your own learning experience. Uh, many subs are, are not content experts for what they're coming in to sub. It's a rare basis that, you know, you have a math teacher subbing for the math classroom. So, uh, just anecdotally speaking. Um, but you're correct. There is an element of that instructional piece that gets lost if you have too many staff members that are out there. Uh, and what that looks like for the remote learners more than the in-person.
Very good. Well, I'd like to thank everybody for, um, spending almost two hours, uh, you know, a lot of fruitful conversation and also. Um, looking at the numbers of, um. Outside participants that we've had, which has ranged, I think, up over 200 at times and it's currently in my, on my screen looking like 170. Uh, I hope you benefited from, uh, these discussions and, uh. If there are no other comments, I'd like to entertain, uh, or make a motion to adjourn this special meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
John Nash is seconded. Uh, so all in favor, maybe raise your hand of adjourning. Anyone opposed? Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. And we'll be signing off. Thanks, Tanya, for all the extra work you, you've done in monitoring those, um, remote feeds.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
All right. Thanks, Peter.
Good night.